They're still trying to work out some audio technical issues, so IT wants us to leave them on.
Okay. So don't say, don't say.
All to order, the planning board meeting of October ninth, twenty twenty four. Please stand, Loyal Legion.
Loyal Legion, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Michael Mandel, the Vice Chairman, running the meeting tonight, and Mr. Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Michiani.
Here.
Ms. Lanahan.
Here.
Mr. McCrory.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Bond.
Here.
Will be voting tonight, okay, thank you. For your information, each project will follow the procedure. Applicant will explain the project, agency comments, board member comments and questions, then public comment, members of the public will be permitted to speak for three minutes. Okay, first project tonight is eighty South Williams Street subdivision plan, please come up and sign in and explain your project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Frank Phillips from the Law Office of Phillips and Millman, on behalf of the applicant. My client to my left, Larry Omelanzuk.
I know, it was Larry O.
And to my right is Paul Gdanski, the engineer on the project. We've been before the board a few times regarding the subdivision on Williams Street. Initially, the application was for a three lot subdivision, which is, which initially had improvements of the paper street, which is this park, but there has been a modification. We reduced it to a two lot subdivision. It's in the RG zone. The revision shows again, two lot subdivision, both lots are vacant at the present time. It's on the east side of South Williams Street, east and south Jefferson Avenue, thirty-five thousand five ten square feet. The lots, as I indicated before, are vacant, one's nineteen thousand eight fifteen point eight, one's fifteen thousand four, six forty-nine point two. No variances are needed. We also have the revision as the required differences between the driveway and the intersection. We did go to the PRC meeting. We had comments at that meeting. We're before this board now, the fire protection had no comments. We did receive some recent comments dated October eighth from the Department Environmental Management and Engineering, which Mr. Gdanski has reviewed, which, which will be addressed. And also from Booker Engineering, which we could also address those issues regarding any type of drainage and catch basins and other things that should be placed on the plan. So we're just putting this before the board now to show the reduction in the subdivision to two lots and to get any comments. I believe that there may be some comments from Ms. Slavin, which we do not have yet.
Frank, they're, they're actually in your reading package right here that was just handed to your client, yes.
Which I have now?
You now have.
Thank you. And that's basically it, I don't know if Paul has to make any, you could make some comments of what you did to change the plan and if the board has any questions.
Yeah, basically, we eliminated the third lot. We showed two single family dwellings with a driveway that, with driveways that are in close proximity to each other. We added some, we have drywells to pick up the increase in runoff created by the development. And that's, that's basically it.
Anybody sign in yet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you gotta give the names.
I was talking. Larry. I got it. Oh, okay, the spelling, Larry, it's O-N-E-L-A-N-Z.
Z U K.
Z U K. Thank you. Thank you. And some of the comments that were made now that I received from the Slavin, which are also consistent with the notes that I have, is that we're going to provide the new existing conditions, which means that there are vacant, it's vacant land and shouldn't show the previous dwellings, provide the landscaping plan. And there was some discussion at the PRC meeting about moving the house further north on the property, which we can do, which we have the flexibility to do now.
Read the comments. The South Williams subdivision plan, PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by the other agencies. Office of Building and Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement dated October third, twenty twenty four. There are six comments. Department Environmental Management Engineering, Town of Orange Town, dated October eighth, twenty twenty four. There are sixteen comments. Booker Engineering dated October eighth, twenty twenty four. There are seventeen comments, site plans are eleven, and there are six with a drainage report. For the, the application has not provided sufficient information to demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the eighty South Williams Street subdivision not be approved for drainage at this time. Did you get a copy of this?
No, we have a copy of that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this came.
It's not an issue, there's no runoff, there's a decrease in runoff of lot one.
But we, until we get a.
I know that, correct.
Okay, Bureau of Fire Prevention dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty four, won't comment. From the Town of Orange Town, Office of Recreation and Parks, dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four. In lieu of recreation facilities, the, it's sixty-three hundred per lot for single family homes and requirement for the reservation of parkland and conditional approval on a payment of twelve thousand six hundred in lieu of parkland. Okay, a letter from Phillips and Millman dated August twelfth, twenty twenty four. Hydraulic analysis and stormwater design calculations dated by Paul Gdanski, P E, dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is that all of them, you're all? Okay, Mr. Andrews, comments, questions, sir?
Oh, yeah. And the site plan, it shows all of the buildings on lot number one?
Yeah, they're gone, they've been removed.
What about that concrete pad there?
I don't know if it, is it not?
Is it removed? There's nothing there now?
It's vacant land.
Yeah, everything's gone.
Yes, okay. Now, where's the driveway gonna come out to on lot number two?
They're both in the same, they're both right next to each other. Just to the north of the driveway for lot, well, the south of lot one, there's the one for lot two.
It's gonna come out on Williams Street?
Correct.
I don't have any, well, just the comment about the, you don't have a landscape plan, we'd like to see a landscape plan, just to make that note from Jane's comments. Right now, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, same issues, you know, you have to address Jane's comments, specifically the landscaping plan. Kirk Test, Bruce, and the drainage issues for Booker?
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah. I, I have no comments at this point.
Mr. McCrory.
Oh, I, yeah, it looks like when you got rid of the third house, got rid of a lot of problems with dealing with that street there. But it was weird, when you had the three houses, you got approval for drainage, and now you didn't get approval for drainage. So there's some, some minor changes, I think, happened there, which is, which is odd. Um, I, I like Jane's comments about separating the driveways, you know, being right near each other. Also, wonder why you couldn't square off the lots better? You know, like, if you, you have room, just make them nice square, so like, on that block, all the houses are lined up a little bit, and you know how it's like tapered?
Well, the idea was because the, Bruce wanted us to have it fifty feet from Jefferson Avenue.
Fifty feet from Jefferson.
So in order to do that, I had to do that.
But if you moved that, didn't have, if you moved the house closer to the north, would, I want it to be, you know?
Then the drive, if I move the driveway further north, then I'm gonna violate that, whatever.
Yeah, so you're, you're, you're caught in a tough spot there. All right, I just wondered, because I know, you know, we always like nice square lots.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you see it tapered like that, and then the house is set back. Yeah. All right, just, yeah, listen to the comments, and, you know, we'll, we'll get you back here.
Mr. Miller.
No, no comments.
Mr. Bond.
So they can't get final time because they don't have drainage?
No. Any comments?
Yeah. Yes, the applicant knew that they had to address my comments as well as Bruce's as well, but they wanted to appear before the board and get any further comments.
No, they have questions.
No, when you open up.
The last, the woman.
What?
For Noah.
Make sure that's in the record.
On nothing before.
It's gonna be a long meeting if we have to.
So the.
Hopefully it is in Met's way.
The site plan, I think you, a couple, you kept, you putting the whole frame dwelling?
Correct, yeah, that was one of the comments at the PRC, we're gonna clear that up.
Right.
Provide a new, with just the existing condition, provide the landscaping plan, as you indicated before, address the drainage, which we just got, so.
Okay, now, do we get a demolition permit for the first? We did?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right. Now, the trees, got fourteen trees to remove. All right, there's three I had a question, and I could see why the other ones, some were in the driveway, whatever, right on the house. But they're behind house number one, which would be the.
We can, we might be able to save some of those.
Yeah, I'm looking at three, there's a ten inch oak.
Yeah, the tulip and the other oak.
Yeah, the other oak, the two oaks there, I mean, tulips sometimes are a problem, they're a fairly weak tree. But the two oaks.
Yeah, that's no problem.
All right, have a look at that. Okay, you gotta have a landscape plan showing the. The, the full environmental assessment form is some correction provisions would be made. Anybody else have any questions? Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Make a motion, we open to the public?
Second.
Michiani, a little second, one favor?
Aye.
All right. If you, if you, if you have comments, please come up, state your name and address, you have three minutes. If the person before you, you're gonna state the exact same thing as them, please come up. But just say, I agree with the person before me, and add any additional things that you want, so please come up.
What's your name?
Merrill McGarity, eighty-five South Williams Street.
Wait, 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 Merrill?
Merrill, M-E-R-R-I-L-L. M-C capital G-A-R-I-T-Y. Eighty-five South Williams Street. I just have a question, how big are the houses proposed?
Oh, oh, no, you gotta talk to us. Talking to the plans there. Sixteen hundred on each? Sixteen hundred square foot?
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to make a comment at this time? Anybody else? Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close the public.
Mr. Andrews, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lanahan, all in favor? Do we have to reaffirm sequer? Okay, do I have a motion to reaffirm sequer?
Motion to reaffirm sequer.
Mr. Andrews, do I have a second? Ms. Lanahan, all in favor? All right. Well, you can't go forward with that, so are you asking for a continuation?
Yes, because we have to address the comments.
You have to ask for a continuation?
I'm asking for a continuation.
Okay, all righty. Any other questions or comments on these things that came in? All right, we'll see you next time.
All right, thank you very much.
So thank you.
Hi.
Play us a clip.
Good luck, good luck with it.
Oh, no, I'm not.
First half of C, isn't the same last name? Have a go on.
You too. Enjoy the game. Next project on the agenda is thirty-nine South Williams Street, please come up, state your name. Sign in, please. Okay, just give us a summary of the changes or whatever's updated on the projects since last time we were here.
So we updated drawings to all the comments from July meeting, and everything was updated. The project is like storage on the ground floor, offices on the second floor. And all comments were updated, but we didn't receive more today.
All right. Read the comments, thirty-nine South Williams Street site plan, the PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies. Office of Building and Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October fourth, twenty twenty-four, there are two comments. The Department Environmental Management and Engineering, letter dated October eighth, twenty twenty-four, they have two comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention has four comments, dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Booker Engineering, October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Drainage review, okay. On July seventh, twenty twenty-four, review noted that the application has provided sufficient information to demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. On July seventh, twenty twenty-four, review noted that we therefore recommend the thirty-nine South Williams Street site plan be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments, of which there are twenty-one. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, two comments. Okay, Rockland County Planning Department, nine-nine-twenty-four, comments attached. A letter from Hudson Engineering and Consulting dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I think, is that it?
Yeah, oh, there's the applicant, Hudson Engineering.
That was the.
Okay.
You just said that was last, you said right July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
That's the one?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Andrews.
I have a question, this proposed slab on grade commercial building. What is, what's that all about?
So there's gonna be no basement in it, we will dig down footings on the perimeter.
Okay.
Down on the lead to cross line, and then there'll be a slab on grade, there's no basement in the building.
There's no building going on top of that?
Yes, there will be, there will be, a building will sit on the exterior footing, but it'll be a slab on grade, there's no basement, that's what slab on grade is.
So you don't?
Mr. Andrews, I can clarify that, that's an architectural thing. When you're doing construction plans for a building, that, that is going to be a concrete slab and concrete footings, that's what it's called, concrete slab on, on grade, that's what that's in reference to.
All right, I have nothing further.
I have no other questions.
Mr. McCrory.
Put a lot of work into this, a few more comments to handle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're good to go.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, it seems just a drainage issue, which, if you received it today.
We received it today, I told it off, so, the only thing about it is that it's additional comments than what we had the last time. We seem to be getting additional comments every time, if we could just get them.
Mr. O'Hara, I can clarify that, too, this is a new engineer.
Yeah, I seen that.
So, based on my review, it looks like a lot of the comments are just drawing cleanup.
That's all it is.
Right, which might be similar to Bruce's comments, as far as notes being in certain spots and things like that. But if you have any questions, just let us know.
Mr. Bond.
You satisfied any lot line issues?
Yeah, we've done all, all variants, everything that we had to do, we've done after board, everything.
Thank you.
Just a few questions. The, now you have the air conditioning units in the back, there are three of them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you're proposing to put in six boxwoods?
Yes, that was part of the act of order, and landscaping.
What's the height of the, what's the height of these boxwoods?
It would be around five foot. And the unit, the units would be like three feet.
Oh, okay. Most of the boxwoods I see are usually lower, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's more or less a hedge we're gonna put in there to screen it off from the neighbors.
Okay. Well, that, hopefully that'll attenuate the sound.
Yeah, plus we, we added a fence at the back line, which is six foot high also that they.
Okay, correct that on your map, on your plan, it says five foot.
Sorry, it was five foot, sorry.
Five foot BBC?
Yeah, five foot BBC, yeah.
I think the major comment would be, the major comment with the drainage has to do with that, the drain in the back of the building.
Yeah.
Which is safe to be clogged, or.
Yeah, but that'll be a maintenance thing, we will have to maintain that.
Right, right.
Any, like, any drain, you have to basically maintain it, I guess.
Okay. Further comments from the board? Do we have a motion to open public portion?
Motion open public.
Mr. Bond, seconded by Mr. Andrews, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public like to speak on it, please come up. State your name and your address.
My name is Joan Foley, and I live at one-eighty Ridge Street, which is the street parallel to Williams Street. And I apologize, it's my first time at a meeting, and I'm not really sure what questions I can ask, and I only made, noticed the signs the other day, and I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
No.
So, I think, I couldn't figure out from reading the plans, what is actually being built at this site?
Well, it's a two-story building.
Okay.
All right, the upper floor is gonna be offices, lower floor is gonna be the work area, storage. And then there'll be four parking spaces in the front.
And I guess my opinion then is that, you know, I'm concerned, and I know it's probably late in the game, but I'll let you all hear me, and that we are, have a lot of empty commercial property already in Pearl River downtown. Towntown is a great place that needs to be developed, in fact, we need to redevelop Williams Street and Ridge Street, because I think if we build townhouses there, or small homes like is going across the street, it can help to revive the town, which is in the process. And I apologize, this man who owns this property is developing something, and I know that it's a good thing, that at least something is there, better than an empty lot. I know next door is a very unkept property, and the other side is an empty lot. In my opinion, I would love to see the whole thing redeveloped into homes that older people could walk to town, use the restaurants, all of those things. So I guess my thought is, you know, why another commercial property? And would the owner of the property reconsider it to build, you know, more, because I believe it's a mixed zone, so if we could have homes there instead, or townhouses, or something like that?
The thing is, it wouldn't fit into downtown Pearl River because of the type of business it is.
I don't, I don't know what that means.
In other words, that business would not flourish on Central Avenue or Main Street.
I see, I see, yeah, yeah. But there are, I mean, obviously, there's other places where those types of places could be. I mean, I guess the opinion is, I, I'm gonna keep coming to these meetings, because I do think that it's really time for the end of, you know, Ridge Street and Williams Street, and all of this sort of surrounding, very decrepit areas of town. It's a nice way to revive the town, and I, if any developers are here, I hope they're listening, because I think that that's what needs to be done to kind of revive Pearl River and make it a great town.
So thank you for coming, and come to our meetings, if you'd like it. One other question, on the property line.
Yes.
With the property to your north. How much of this stuff is on your property? Have they done the new survey line there?
No, I haven't done the new survey until, I wasn't until I got the survey out there, until I was ready to start.
Okay.
Because in case I lose the lines again, obviously.
Right, yeah, because that stuff is guy, that stuff is encroaching, I don't know about on the south side.
Yeah.
But I think there could be encroachment there, too, so it's gotta be.
I'll have to have a look at that.
And cleared up, okay? All righty. Do I have, anybody else in the public like to speak? If you do, please come up, state your name, address.
Yeah, hi, everybody, I'm Andy McKean, I own the two lots to the north of the proposed project, thirty-five South William and forty-two Ridge Street. Looking at the plans, just, you know, before the meeting started, my biggest concern is, of course, the drainage, that's what I brought up in the past, past meetings. And I would just like to ask maybe Jane knows, I don't know if anybody knows beside her, what a hydrodynamic separator is, does anybody know what that is? And you know what it is?
I know the concept, but I can't give you definition.
So.
But it's been through two creative engineers, three, two separate engineers.
Right.
So the county engineer as well as Booker engineer.
Okay. So just to simplify things, are we looking at like a, a tank that's gonna be installed?
Have any other comments? That's it.
Can I get an answer to my question?
No, after you finish what you asked.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry.
But if you finish your comments, then we'll.
Yeah, and the other thing is, on a minor note, you know, make sure that steel fences are put up all the way around the property, which is noted on the plan.
They will be put up.
And I applaud, I applaud Mr. O'Hara for doing the project, I'm not gonna give him any hard time, once he starts. You know, he's, you know, he's taken a big undertaking to do this, it's a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of money. And I'll, if I can help him in any way, I will, I have no other negative comments, other than the drainage.
The new survey line is put out there, please, any, if your.
I already moved the vehicles already, if you were out there lately.
Oh, I was out there today.
Yeah, okay.
There's still stuff that's hanging over.
But you're looking with your line of sight, you're not, you don't even know where the property line is. I moved two or three cars already, if there's any others that have to be moved, we'll certainly move them.
Okay.
It's not an issue, at all.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Could you answer that?
Yeah, so the hydro is for the rainwater off the roof.
Okay.
So then the hydro then separates and into the, into the storm.
Okay. That's, to answer your question, so that water is from the drainage from the roof, it goes down into the tank, they separate any oil or water or anything else, and then the water goes into the drainage system.
Can I just ask one other thing? Where does the water end up? Is it, is it gonna go out into the storm drain system out of the street, or is it gonna stay on the.
No, no, it's going out, because it does flow that way naturally.
So it's gonna go in the storm drain outside?
Yes.
Beautiful. Made my day, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay.
Anybody else?
Anybody else make a comment? Please come up, state your name and address.
Henry Wehm, Sunset Road, Lovell, New York.
Hold on, spell your name.
W E M M E R. One oh seven Sunset Road. You said it separates the oil on the roof? 107 Sunset Road. You said it separates the oil on the roof?
Anything particles up on the roof that come down?
How's the oil get on the roof? How does the oil get on the roof?
Sir, I'm not going to argue with you here. I'm just saying what it does.
I'm just curious. Because I looked up your separator. It's usually for subsurface.
Yeah, usually it is.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just curious. I was hoping we'd have an answer.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, two engineers have reviewed this.
Yeah.
And it meets town code and environmental code. So the oil-water separator is for stuff that, you know, will get into it from ground. Obviously, if anything comes off the roof, it'll also be separated.
Can I answer your question?
So it's ready for groundwater. And the reason I ask this, we have the church on Sunset Road that was supposed to have one installed years ago that never happened, so I'm just curious.
Everything will be installed per plan, or they will have to return to the planning board. They will not be able to get a CO. I can't speak to what happened to the church in Sunset, but if you have any issues with that, you're more than free to file a complaint, and we can look into it.
I'm not looking to file a complaint, I'm just asking a question, because things get overlooked.
And I can't, I, sir, again, if you want to call the office, we can talk about that. I can't speak to an older project that I don't have any experience with. So, but if you have some concerns, we're, we're here to answer your questions.
Anybody else in the public like to make a comment at this time? Anybody else like to make a comment?
Make a motion to close public comment?
Second. Mr. Fischiani, Mr. Andrews, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for final wood conditions.
Wait a minute. We're just checking first, Bruce.
Checking what?
I'll ask the question, sir. Everybody good?
How are you, Bruce?
Okay. Do I have a motion for final wood conditions? All right, Mr. Bond.
Again.
Officer Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October 4, 2024. There are two comments. Department Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town. There are two comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, dated September 23, 2024. Four comments. Broker Engineering, dated October 9, 2024. On July 7, the review noted the application has provided sufficient information to demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. On July 7, 2024, review noted that we therefore recommend that 39 South William Street site plan be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments, of which there are 21. Rockland County Sewer District 1, two comments. Okay, I think that's it, all in comments?
Yep. Rockland County Planning, you did read that the first round. From July?
No. You have a thing? Says July 10 is ready. Don't make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, just try to, you know.
No, I get it, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think they suggest a more frequent inspection of that pipe in the back, the drainage pipe.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
All right. This way they'll keep the flow going down. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Pentecostal Council Refuge of Salvation. Please go forward, sign in, state your name.
Raymond Castro.
Come here, sit down, sir. There's a sheet there to sign in.
Castro, C A S T R O.
Please sign in, and you can put your plans up there if you want, on the.
These are essentials, I'm, I'm not sure if they're going to be.
Not yet. All right. Could you just give us a summary of your project, sir?
So basically, it's a house of worship. It's going to be built. There's already a parsonage there, so on, on back of the lot, the house of worship will be built. Pretty much, it's going to be a parking lot. I know there's some challenges with the space for the turnaround for the fire truck, so.
You've gone through all the conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, let me read the conditions here. PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies. Officer Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October 4, 2024. There are 14 comments. Officer Department Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, October 8, 2024. There are 24 comments. Broker Engineering, October 8, 2024. There are, there are 17 comments. The application has not provided sufficient information to demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend the Pentecostal Council Refuge of Salvation Site Plan not be approved for drainage at this time. And that's based upon the 17 comments above. Okay, without drainage, you can't go forward. I'll read you all the comments, and then you can ask questions, whatever. Bureau of Fire Prevention, September 23, 2024. There are four comments, and three both, seven comments all told. We have a comment from Michael Bosco, Chairman of the ZBA, dated September 5, 2024, Site Plan Review. Rockland County Department of Planning, October 1, 2024. They have 27 comments. Rockland County Center for Environmental Health, September 23, 2024. Two comments. Rockland County Drainage Agency, letter dated September 9, 2024. There are three comments. Rockland County Sewer District Number 1, September 23, 2024. There are two comments. We have a letter from Alfred Gotti, dated September 16, 2024. That's from Orange and Rockland. It says, although the service at 575303 does not seem to have any conflicts with the proposed work, the service to 575 Route 303 may be in conflict with the proposed work. Please contact O N R's business office. Okay. Town of Orange Town ZBA, September 4, 2024. Consent to Town of Orange Town Planning Board serving as lead agency. Town of Orange Town ZBA, September 4, 2024. Comments attached. Rockland County Department of Health, September 23, 2024. Comments attached. Rockland County Department of Health, dated September 23, 2024. Consent to Town of Orange Town Planning Board serve as lead agency. Beolia Water, October 7, 2024. No further, no future correspondence for the site should be sent to this agency. Okay. We have, okay. All right. Anything else there? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Andrews.
I don't have any questions at this moment right now.
Obviously, there's a lot of things that have to be taken care of before you can come back to the board. So it's, it's, the new house of worship is going to be about 4,000 square feet? And the, 4,048, and the existing house is going to stay there for the pastor's house. Do you have, what, what is this going to look like? What's the house of worship going to look like? Do you have images of it? Yeah, can I see that? Yeah. If you want to put them up there, you can, yeah. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Ms. Linehan?
Just the same. If you want to stand on this side, so the, the public can see the picture, yeah.
There's just a lot of comments to be taken care of here, and a lot of details to work through still, so.
Yeah, these were preliminary just for discussion purposes, so.
Right. Yeah.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the plans need to be reworked. You know, check out all the comments. The parking, is that on the parking? Maybe lower the, you know, make the footprint smaller. That might solve some of the parking, parking problems. You've got the 303 overlay to worry about, the, the buffers and all that. So you've got some work to do. And then, you know, we'll, we'll see you back when you work, work it all out, all right?
Mr. Noah?
No comments.
Mr. Bond?
There's just a lot of things that you guys have to address before this can even have a shot at moving anywhere, so.
Add this to. Just to highlight a few things. You know, make sure, looking at the drainage and that, you know, make sure that there's nothing flowing out to the neighbor's property, because that does run down to the back.
Yeah, I had everything pitched to the back and into the drywall system.
Yeah, it's a natural flow, it seems, from the way the property is set up over there.
Unfortunately, there's no way to get it to flow the other way, so everything's.
Yeah, because there's nothing can go off the property there.
Yeah.
All right. Just a few things. The, the SEAF is incomplete. It's missing a page. All right, take a look at it again. It's missing it back. Need a lighting and landscape plan. Traffic studies for Rockland County Planning Number 2. What you may want to do right off the bat is, is get in touch with the Department Environmental Management and Engineering regarding the Perkin Soil Test.
Yeah.
Either done the fall, or you're going to have to wait till the spring.
Yeah.
So that's something, and you have to notify them, because they have to witness it.
Yeah.
Okay. Otherwise, they're not accepted. All right. The retaining wall, is that on the neighbor's property or your re, property?
We have walls on our property. They're, yeah, they're all on our property.
All on your property?
Yeah. Some ones in the back by the, by the parking lot are ours.
Okay. And you got any variances besides that?
Correct.
You should show an existing condition plan.
Yeah, I will.
And a, the, the new build plan.
Yeah.
That, that small, one-story unit attached to the brick house, that's going to remain, is going to be.
No, it's going to come down.
That's going to come down, okay. That should be off down there, is to be demolished unless I, all right? Because it's not in the best of shape, all right. So that'll be demolished then? Okay. That'll be, I guess, where the, some of the handicap parking is going to be?
Yes.
All right, yeah, okay. All righty. Any additional comments from the board? Hey, do I have a motion? The tree line that's on the north side of the property, is that going to remain, Foley?
Some of the trees have to come out. Only a couple will have, be able to remain. The ones close to the curb line would have to come out.
But it goes the whole length of the property, it looks like.
Because of grading, we'd have to take down some of these trees. There's no way they'd be able to be saved. But we're going to change the plan, so we may be able to save some of them.
Okay. And you'll be able to produce a landscape.
Yeah, no matter what we would have, the landscape decide anyway. We'll pull the size.
Okay, that's it. You know, when you're doing landscape plan, make sure that you show all the trees, the type and size.
Yeah.
And which ones you're going to be taking down.
Yeah.
Okay. And don't forget, you also, within the 303 overlay.
Okay.
District, you're a plant part of it. You comply, you have a good, you have a, I think, a nice section there, is it 15 feet? It's not the full.
It's 25 feet.
25?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's something that should, should be on the landscape plan showing that.
No problem.
Okay? The motion to open public portion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, Ms. Linehan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have anybody from the public that would like to ask a question at this time? Anybody from the public like to ask any questions regarding this? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close public portion? Motion to close. Mr. Andrews, Ms. Linehan, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you, are you going to request a continuance, or?
I don't know, maybe we, because there's, because if there's a large amount of comments, maybe we should just, we'll come back, we'll come back with a, I don't know, we'll be ready to come back the next meeting.
Oh, no, there's no openings. There's no opening.
Just request a continuance.
Yeah, continuation indefinitely.
Yes, okay, yes, yes.
Because if you don't ask a continuation, that's.
You request, you're requesting a? Okay, all right. Good luck. I hope, you know, if you have questions.
Thank you.
You know, just contact the Buildings Department in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Next on is Noonan's Backyard Dining Area. Please sign in. Everybody signed in? Well, somebody give us an update on any changes or additions to plans since the last meeting.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take it off.
Thank you.
Jay Greenwell, Lancer Bear. The biggest issue that we addressed with this most recent plan, first of all, we, we got all the variances that we needed, coming back for requesting final. And the big thing was making sure we satisfied Dave Bajuski's concerns with respect to creating a fire lane, having it striped, and having another pedestrian accessway out to South William, so we have access to East Central and to South William, and the adequate signage, no parking, no standing, striping, et cetera, to create the egress path. It's very clearly defined. That was the biggest issue that we had. That, and getting the variances that we needed, and.
Okay. Mr. Byrne, do you have anything to add, or?
Oh, just primarily, I think we've covered every item. This strike is going since 2020. We hope that we're meeting all the requirements to the board now, so that we can. And we hope that we're meeting all the requirements to board now so that we can finally end the COVID pandemic, which was.
Noonan's Backyard Dining Area Plan. P R C has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, October 8, 2024, has one comment. Officer Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October 4, 2024, one comment. Bureau of Fire Prevention, September 23, 2024, one comment. Rockland County Planning, September 23, 2024, has five comments. Rockland County Center for Environmental Health, October 3, 2024, one comment. Rockland County Highway Department, March 19, 2024, one comment. Rockland County Drainage Agency, March 26, 2024, two comments. Rockland County Highway Department, September 9, 2024, no comments at this time. Rockland County Planning Department, September 9, 2024, comments attached. Rockland County Planning Department, 9/9/24, same thing. Comments attached. Okay? Any other on that?
No, you got it.
Okay.
We want one item on the Rockland County Planning, we will be requesting one override. This has been overridden.
Okay.
Prior to prior comment, zoning board has overridden.
Which is comment number three.
Okay, and we get to, after the comments and everything, we get past the public portion and we'll, and we start going towards whatever we're going. I figured you wanted that one. I didn't read everything. Mr. Andrews.
I have no comments at this time.
Mr. Fisiani?
No comments.
Ms. Linehan?
No comments.
Ms. McCrory?
Looks like you satisfied the fire prevention, which is like the biggest thing he was concerned about, the egresses, and you got all that taken care of. And I think that was the main thing, that was kind of holding it up a little bit, but everything looks good.
Mr. Miller?
No comment.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, everything looks good.
Um, okay. Regarding the, all right. Okay.
Opening up to the public?
Motion open to public. Comments first, Mr. Andrews. Rockland County Center for Environmental Health, Number One, is the restaurant aiding additional?
Yes, and you had a conversation with the health department, Patricia? I gave, I gave Patricia, I don't know her last name. She's the director, I gave her a $80 check.
Patrice Robertson.
Patrice, I gave her a $80 check. She has the updated plans in her folder that I was expecting last month, and I have. I updated operating permit. We do have a letter from them saying that we really don't need a permit from them, but it's just updating paperwork.
Right. No, it's just a review, it doesn't say, yeah. Rear parking area. Okay. The proposed sign going out to South William Street, emergency access to South William Street. There's a large concrete barrier, it's three steps.
Steps.
Yeah, you gotta walk up, but you gotta walk down it, and that can cause a bottleneck, which is my opinion. Then there's another stoop partially blocking the thing, which is also, in a very narrow alleyway, an emergency stampede could result.
That's why the fire inspector made us strike the emergency egress out to central, east central.
Now, the thing is with the emergency egress tonight, that's, it's great, it's finally done. The question is, yeah, when I went back there and checked it again, there were three vehicles parked back there. One was behind the restaurant just to your east, which I think is the Thai restaurant.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that their property or your property? Theirs. So they're parking. What's going to prevent them from parking on their property? On their property?
Behind their building?
Yes, that's where they had a car parked.
Nothing.
We can't stop them, but they cannot.
They can't park.
They don't have an easy. In the driveway, is that not? What's, what's the question?
The question is they, they have access to that backyard to park. That's their property there.
They have an easement right, but they cannot leave. The critical thing was the vehicle cannot stay in the driveway.
Right, but they can park that car back there.
Well, it's their property unless you can't tell them what to do.
No, I just wanted to put it on to the record, it's their property, they can't park back there. Okay? What's going to stop, okay. When I take a look at the location on the 7, there were four people in the backyard area, two at the table, two at the bar. There was also two vehicles parked in the fire zone. What's going to stop people from parking in the fire zone when the, when the restaurant in the back area there is in full operation?
Well, it's not currently striped or signed the way it needs to be in order to be enforced. So that's what's going to be the determining factor is once this is all set up. With the no parking signs in front of the gate, with the signage, and no parking, no standing, as well as the striping of the fire lane. All of that is going to be a visual and an actual deterrent because he's going to have to enforce it.
Did you ever think of putting, well, you have the other person with their right to go through that alleyway too. Of putting in a removable ballot that, I know it's.
But you, exactly that. You know, occasionally, there's, it's an issue with also with deliveries and so on.
Well, no, it, there's nobody back there. I mean, you're actually going to block it with the deliveries during the open operation. Is that correct?
It was felt that it would be more of a hindrance in an emergency if the ballot was up itself. In other words, the ballot could be more detrimental for people getting out. If you have that kind of situation.
Or if you had to bring in an emergency vehicle in.
Or an emergency vehicle going back there, it's just a better situation.
Did you make a, put in a removable ballot?
That's what we, that's what we were discussing.
That's what we were discussing, removable ballot. They use it to projects other places. Is the, I know you have that, you want to go out to South William Street, just wondering, is that other, on the southern part of your property, is the, the additional restaurant that's attached to on the east-west side of the building? You can go through there to get out too, right?
That's the number 20.
Right.
That's available. The, even this, when you're talking, it's available, even the one that we have, that gate, it's available there too, but we're not using it as one that's required. Which is saying in a real critical situation of people have to get in and out, there are other ways. But this is the main exit for an emergency.
But other than personal enforcement, there's no way to prevent cars from pulling in or out? Or to prevent deliveries during, when there are people back there?
Well, we're not going to have deliveries coming in. Look, it's, somebody want to be subject to a fine, somebody want to be subject to.
I'm not worried about the fine, I'm worried about the safety of the individuals back there. In case of an emergency, people do stampede, so that's what I'm worried about.
No, I, I'm agreeing with you, but we think just that they're safest way of getting the people out, but just having an open driveway now. You will not have cars coming in and out when people.
Have you spoken to the person that owns the Chinese restaurant, the Thai restaurant next door yet about the, it's going to be a fire lane, so they're aware of it?
It's his property.
No, no, I'm not talking about the fire lane, I'm talking about where they can park behind their restaurant.
Behind here?
Yeah. And that's their property.
Haven't spoken to them, no. Because I don't, I don't anticipate anything is going to change, that they would park behind there. Park there now.
Okay, do I have a, any other questions from the board? Do I have a motion open public portion?
Open the motion, public.
Ms. Andrews, do I have a second? Ms. Linehan, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public like to ask any questions on this project? Anybody from the public like to ask any questions on this project? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close public portion? Ms. Linehan?
I'll second.
Mr. Bond, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For a final?
Make a motion with final with conditions?
Okay. Mr. Fisiani? All right. Condition are as follows. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, October 8, 2024. One condition. Officer Building Zoning Planning Administration Enforcement, October 4, 2024, one comment. Bureau of Fire Prevention, one comment, a letter dated September 23, 2024. Rockland County Planning, okay, dated September 23, 2024. There are five comments, you mentioned that you wanted to override one.
Number three, yes, because those variances have already been granted by the zoning board of Kansas.
Jay, do you have that date?
Of the Z B A? Actually, I think I'm right. Yeah, 24-39, 7-31-24 was the date of the decision. Number 24 dash 39.
Do I have a motion to override the?
I'll make the motion to override number three.
Mr. Bond, second. Ms. Andrews, all in favor?
Aye.
And the rationale is?
They already got the variances from the Z B A.
Thank you, Mr. Bond.
Mentioned, so.
Yeah, Z B A number 24 dash 39, dated 7-31-24.
Got that, Joy?
I'm sorry. Z B A number 24-39, dated 7-31-24.
Okay. Center for Environmental Health, Rockland County, October 3, 2024, one comment. Rockland County Highway Department, March 19, 2024, one comment. Rockland County Drainage Agency, letter dated March 26, 2024, two comments. Is that's all of them?
Yep.
Do I have a, a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a roll for vote on the, on the project. Okay. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Fisiani?
Yep.
Ms. Linehan, yes. Mr. McCrory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Chairman votes no on it, based upon what I stated earlier.
Well, you have to look at the tradition.
Hmm?
I feel about the tradition.
Oh, tradition.
I want to thank the board, though, it's been a long job, many years, it's been a hard job. Cold October, I hope this project is over. Pop it off with a Mets one.
A Mets one, yeah. Yep. Four to one.
Four to one.
All I hope is that, you know, when you mark that alleyway, that it's very well stated. And please, Mr., please talk to the people next door, let them know if it's going to be a fire lane. If you can't park the car in there, that literally just blocking that lane.
I don't know.
Okay. Just wanted to know, once they're on, you know, like them to know. All right? Okay, thank you. Okay. There's no further projects tonight, there's additional other business? Anybody's waiting for anything else?
Is Tom presenting the other business?
Yeah, there's three other projects on the other business.
The first one is a petition.
Right from town.
For the town board. So the third, the planning board, the local agency, termination.
Yeah, it's in a matter of petition of Hagerty Homes Incorporated and Hudson Valley Nursery Incorporated. Amendment to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Orange Town from an R-80 district to an R-15 district. Looking at it, I think that what, it's looking for the planning board does not object to the Orange Town Town Board serving as lead agency. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Just only the agency?
Yeah. Mr. Bond?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Mr. McCrory? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, so the planning board, you have that? Okay, does not object to the Town of Orange Town Town Board serving as lead agency. The next one is Village of Nyack, 9/27/24. Have 199 at DePaul Street in Nyack. Remove one-story addition, replace it with a larger one-story addition and covered porch. It's, I think it should be referred to local, for local determination, if anybody has any questions or objects to that. Do I have a motion on that one?
I'll make the one.
Mr. Bond, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Andrews, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, we have a second one. Village of Nyack, 14 DePuro Street. Demolish reconstruction, air five, damaged residences, admitting previously proved design. Also construct a new one called Garage. I think it should be referred for local determination. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the one.
Mr. Bond, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Fisiani, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The minutes for September 11th and the 25th, we voted on at the next meeting due to amendments that were sent in, and has to be reviewed by all members of the board. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. McCrory, Ms. Andrews, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The town board project that we're talking about, you live in it, West from Highland or whatever?
Let's refer to the town board, we have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, they, they do.
Why is opposed to tonight then? It's just other business.
It's other business.
They handle, they do the zone changing, the town board does the zone changing.
They ask us if, if we object to them being lead agency. As we read with the, we do not object to them being lead agency. It's their, it's their purview.
I thought there was going to be a little bit more about it.
No, no, we, we don't get into it, that's, that'll be at the town board, and it should be within the next month or two. Keep an eye on the town board meetings.
Yeah.
I'm far away, I didn't understand why that was kicked so far forward.
Because they have to wait for all the agencies, as I read, they all have to respond. And once they get it all in, then they can do it. You too, thank you. Do I have a motion? We got it already, right? Richard?
I closed.
Ms. Andrews, second.
I second. Oh, no. No, I didn't.
Are you trying to steal this stuff?
No, I, I did on the up.
Okay, wait a minute, the mic, camera's still on? Please turn off the camera, you can turn off your mics too.